Good evening, everyone. The time is 5:38 PM. I would like to call our work session to order. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Green? Mr. Lawson?
Here.
Mr. Majors?
Here.
Ms. Rose?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez? Ms. Bowers?
Present. Please note Vice President Green may be joining us via Zoom, and Councilman Rodriguez is excused this evening. As a result, we will move the Public Safety Committee Third Quarter Reports to our next work session that will occur on Tuesday, November 21st. So our sole committee business will come from the Parks, Recreation, and Enrichment Committee. So I will defer to our Chair, Councilwoman Rose.
Thank you, President Bowers. Good evening, everyone. So for Parks and Recreation and Enrichment Committee, we have two quarterly reports. We're going to start with the Bureau of Park and Recreation and Enrichment. Do we have anybody from the administration here?
I will note what I mentioned to you earlier today. When I was talking to, in a meeting with the deputy who's now over at Public Works, they indicated they thought that they did their presentation last week, or last, two weeks ago.
Okay.
Because it came under the Public Works, and they went through statistics for parks that evening.
Okay. Thank you so much for filling us in with that. Solicitor Grover. So then our next quarterly report is the Department of Facilities and Capital Projects. Is anybody from the administration here to give us that quarterly report?
I can do that for you.
Okay. Thank you, Director Baker.
Sure.
Take it away.
I don't know how this whole new, all right, it's over there.
I have it on here.
You just going to hit the button for me?
If everyone could please be mindful of the microphones, it's difficult to hear in the back of the room, so I'm not sure if everyone is able to hear you. Thank you.
All right, said product deactivated, but it's working. All right, well, this is the beginning of our our presentation. It's short for you tonight. We have some numbers here. The Public Works Restrooms in the Public Works Building, 1820 Paxton, we have requested that we get some preliminary plans and numbers from some engineers to remodel those bathrooms, to make them ADA compliant, and just update to, you know, modern standards and needs since they're, they're in pretty, pretty rough shape. So you see the cost there, $15,000. That's our, our cap we have on that project. And that's just for the beginning stages of it. That's not actually to do the construction work itself. The line below that is the MLK fire pump, and that is something we've had in the works for a while. It's, it's actually a rather large project just because of the size of the existing fire pump and the age of it. Obviously, it's a necessity that we must have to keep the building operational. And you can see the completion date for that project itself. Below that one would be the flooring and the MLK. This is the mayor's suite that we put new carpet in because it was, again, in pretty bad shape. PSB HVAC installation. So this is a big one we're doing this year. It's going to be a multi-year project. You see the completion date's 2015. So far, it has started without any sort of hitches. Everyone over there is, you know, very accepting and willing to give up whatever space they need so the construction can take place. It's, it's definitely not quiet over there, but as I said, it's, it's all been positive comments from the police and anyone else that's being affected so far. The Public Safety Building, the ADA restrooms, that, or, I'm sorry, ADA remodels, that will include restrooms and the public space. The entryway ramp, we'll be putting in a wheelchair lift, more modern areas for the public to come in and interact with officers or CSAs. And then they'll also be much more visible in that area as well. This is going to move the evidence room from the basement where we do get flooded and have, you know, rodent bug and moisture issues, and move them upstairs to the first floor where the old comp center was, or is currently. That project is going to be done in parallel with our HVAC project. Since we're going to be tearing things apart, we're going to do it once, and then we will have those different contractors working, hopefully in tandem together, to start putting things back, you know, in the most cost-effective way. We have the mansion porch project on here. That has been a little bit of a pain just because after the tear out of the porch, we see there is additional work that needs to be addressed. That entire project is going to come to a grand total of $264,000, which is much more than we expected it to come out to be. We will be asking for additional funding from council for around $140,000 for that project. And then the last one on here is the Reservoir Park Mansion Roof. Again, you can see the completion date on there, and the roof came to a grand total of $276,761. Go to the next slide, please. All right, so this slide is for our special events. This is promoting some of the features we had at this year's Capona Festival. You can, you know, read down the list of highlights on there, but we did have some new events. And we do have some supporting videos that will, will kind of go into depth on some of these events. So if you'd like to hit the next slide, and then hit the spacebar? Do we have sound? I want to pause it to get sound.
So this is the Capona Festival. This festival has been going on for over 100 years. There's so many different activities throughout the weekend. We have the normal food trucks, artisans, shopping vendors, nonprofits. But then we also have our new multicultural celebration area. And so that area has vendors, but then it also has performances throughout the entire weekend celebrating the different cultures and representation throughout the community. Basically, my work tends to be very playful, have kind of a dreamlike quality. A lot of them have little puns in them, like, if I may? I've got a giraffe here that's looking down on the little people. There's all stories on the back as well that tell their puns. And yeah, I just love to play with colors and fun ideas, and it's just all kind of grown from there. It's amazing. It's absolutely wonderful to be able to meet other artists, see their work, see what they do with themselves and their time, and get inspired by all the other artists that this community has, that this event in particular brings together.
I am working on an ankle loom. An ankle is an English word meaning thin piece of woven material. It is a weaving loom. And these looms have been documented even back during the Egyptian times. Right now, I'm making a sash in the Vietnam ribbon colors. It's always important to show all your heritage and show all the different heritages around here as, as basically the educational thing.
We've been doing the Native American Pow Wow at Capona for many, many, many years. They have their own set of performances and activities and vendors over on City Island that is guaranteed you need to check it out. Between all the amazing people here, some of the great food, and being able to catch some of the acts, like the high-wire acts they have, there's not a single favorite to it. It's all just so much fun.
This year, we did have a drone show mixed in with the fireworks show, and it did work out pretty well for us. So we just kind of, we're dabbling into that to see if we were to go that direction, how it would look in our particular venue that we're showing it at. So who knows what will be to come? All right, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Baker. I don't have any questions. I thought your presentation was great. It didn't leave me with any extra questions to ask you, so I'll check with my fellow council members and see if they have any questions for you. I'll start here to my left with Councilman Majors. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. No questions as it pertains to the presentation, but we'll have some follow-up questions for the administration as it relates to, I guess, the new organization chart and where things fall into structure because facilities and capital projects, I don't know if it necessarily belongs under Park Recreation and Enrichment, but we can have that conversation with the administration, not Mr. Baker. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Majors, sorry. President Bowers, do you have any questions?
I do. Thank you. Thanks for your presentation. I just wanted to follow up on the the porch project at the mansion. Is that the one that you mentioned there would be an additional funding request needed for that one? Just wanted to make sure I was clear on what was needed.
Yes.
Okay. And with the timelines for some of the other projects, such as the, the fire pump replacement within this building, you intend for that to be completed before the end of the year?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
I can tell you the exact timeline for that. So in the, yeah, it says fall of 2023 is what it's slated for.
Okay. And then the Public Safety Building ADA remodel, so that's pending with legal and needs to go out for bid before any timelines are set? Is that correct?
Yeah, we're in the final stages of that, so we just have a few more things to work out with, with legal, and then we should be ready to go with that project.
Okay. And then are you at liberty to speak to your involvement with the Broad Street Market at all? I know.
I think, for the most part, yes. I don't think, we can't discuss that.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind sharing your role in the process?
So basically, I'm serving as like the construction manager for that process. We're working with the market, and we're, we're trying to receive as many donations as possible through the market. We are receiving volunteer work from multiple different unions, and there's, you know, a lot of help out there, a lot of people that are interested. And there's a lot of work that needs to be done, and fortunately and unfortunately, it has to be done on a very, very short turnaround time. So sometimes there are people that want to help, but they can't do it for weeks on end, and when they can, it's already too late. So, you know, we'll have to, to kind of sub some of that stuff out. But for the most part, we've seen a lot of really enthusiastic people that are, that are completely willing to help. I mean, everything, what I just dealt with yesterday was the store manager at Home Depot on the West Shore was helping us because he actually lives like a block and a half down from the market. And we were told no way, no how are we going to get materials in time for the volunteers to come and do the work. And I gave him a call. He has total sympathy for what's happening out there, and he made it happen. So it's amazing the people that come out of the woodwork to help us out with this particular project. It's just, no matter where you go, who you talk to, they seem to be completely open to doing whatever it is they have to do to get us where we need to be.
And just for clarity for the public, we're talking about the temporary building?
Correct. Yes, I'm sorry, I'm so into the temporary, I should have said that from the, from the get-go.
Thank you. I don't think I have any other questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Lawson, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Director Baker. This was a great presentation. And my, my question is kind of on the, the piggyback on the market is just getting a sense for overall timeframe on where we think we are for when we may be completing that temporary building.
So the framing, the rough framing side started last night. It is being completed by volunteer framers that are doing all the work. So they are coming after work. They'll be working tonight, you know, they're there currently. They'll be working tomorrow night, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then probably on Monday as well. So Sunday night, they should be finished with all of the interior work. And this is, you know, unless we run into any unforeseen issues. And then it's my hope that Monday morning, our, our MEP contractors can then come in and start doing all of their, their trade work after the, the framing has been, for the majority, completed.
Okay, are we anticipating that one to? Because I know we're working with volunteers, so it's not as simple as a typical project where you say, hey, this, these are our deadlines, and this is what will get it done? Or are we anticipating completion before year's end, or?
So I'm, I'm really doing my best not to give any sort of completion dates just because of the infancy of the project. I think as early as middle to end of next week, we might have somewhat of an idea of when we can, can kind of get a close, you know, completion date. But as of right now, since we, we don't actually have any physical walls or anything up in the market itself, we started working the mechanical building on the outside last night. We're, we're, we're too soon into the project for me. If I put a date out there, it's going to be wrong no matter what it is. So we're, we're holding off on that for now. But shortly, I think I can get you some rough ideas.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lawson. Councilwoman Daniels, do you have any questions?
Yes, I have a question and just a general comment. The folks could speak into the microphone because, Mr. Grover, I couldn't hear anything you said back there. The one question is more programmatic and is forward-looking. I saw that the Halloween date was changed. When was that done? And what's, what are the, what is, whether, what are the guidelines for this year's Halloween?
I believe you would have to speak with someone in Public Works about that. I'm not sure anymore.
Okay. And the second question is the parking lot for the Civil War Museum that's really breaking off. Is the city doing anything about that? And that's it.
Thank you. Do you have an answer for that, Director Baker?
Is that Public Works?
It's the, it's the city engineer. So there has been a one study that went through it, and now there's a second, more detailed study that has been issued by outside engineers on the project. And it's really sort of a decision-making time about the options to do with it. I will say, and you can ask Mr. Snow, correct me if I'm wrong, it looks much worse than it is. That's what the structural side is saying. You know, when they, when they, when they looked at it, so it's, it's a much more solvable problem looking at it than I think people thought. And it's time to make a couple of decisions about it. But they, but he did feel that Mr. Snow to go out and do a more detailed survey was important in order to, to make an informed decision. If you think about that wall, we only have that top four feet of it up there. And so that's what, where the city's right away and even goes into alone there. That's the structure. The bottom structure is not an issue as far as we know. You know, that's not our, our structure, and it, it is not the problem. Our four-foot structure at the top of the wall is the problem. So there'll be proposals on how to solve it. There'll be a proposed contract, how to solve it. I can't give you an exact timeline, but, but I just got with Mr. Snow last week to see that, you know, that the second report had come in.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Grover. Vice President Green, do you have any questions for Director Baker on Facilities and Capital Projects? I believe it is. Sorry, it's changed. Yep, Department of Facilities and Capital Projects.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Have questions?
Okay, thank you. Well, then that, unless anybody else has any further questions, do you, go ahead, Councilman Majors.
Okay. I guess, one question. When were you notified of the change in structure to now be, I guess the new title is Director of Facilities and, hold on, I'm sorry, I have too many. Facilities and Capital Projects, that's the new title. When was that notification made?
I could look in my notes to give you the exact date. It's, it's been a little while.
Okay. We can follow up on that. And then with, last question for me with respect to the Broad Street Market in terms of your communication with vendors. I know we've, there's a working group that's trying to work with them. Are you the conduit or a conversation piece, the person having conversations with the vendors in terms of how the next steps are going to go? Or is that Director Hill?
Oh, no, that, yeah, they reach out to me on a regular basis as far as like timelines and requirements. It, it's really a group effort. So there's multiple entities at the city that are, that are working with those vendors. So if, if, you know, they need a specific question that our fire chief can answer, he'll do that. And if, if Ms. Hill can answer it, you know, she'll absolutely do that. If Mr. Hartman can answer it, he'll do that. So it's, it's group effort. I can tell you, I get phone calls on a daily basis. So they're typically more technical questions for, you know, what, what amperage service can I have in this space? Or what are my dimensions for this cooktop? Or, you know, what kind of fire suppression systems are we using? Those types of things I'm, I'm helping vendors with.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair Rose.
You're welcome. Councilman Majors. If that's it, then that concludes the business of the Parks and Recreation and Enrichment Committee.
Thank you very much. Thank you. As I mentioned at the beginning of our work session, Councilman Rodriguez, our Public Safety Committee Chair, is excused this evening. As a result, we will move the Public Safety Third Quarter Quarterly Reports to our next work session, which will occur on November 21st, 2023. We will now move to public comment. Just a few housekeeping notes before we do so. If you would like to offer public comment, please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You'll have two minutes to share your comments. Mr. Truesdale will serve as our timekeeper. I'll begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment?
I'm back. I'm Dewana Gay. I'm a provider in the city of Harrisburg. And every time I come down here, I'm going to ask to remove the ordinance of daycares to the city of Harrisburg. There are several different reasons why I have. My union reps are here from Philadelphia, and I also have a specialist, provider specialist with me. We all know the rules and regulations for the state, and the same thing is the city is trying to put on daycare providers that we're paying for, and none of this is being done far as the fire inspection and the health and safety. I talked to somebody today that's been open since 2002. Only time the city was there was to zone her house. Somebody from 2005 today. No fire safety, no, none of that was provided at her house since she's been open. I've been open since, I thought it was 2010, but, I mean, 2011, but 2010. No one has been at my house. All these, all of this, I just feel like the city shouldn't have any business with this because we already get health and safety from the food programs. They come once a year, I mean, they come, announce once a year, two times unannounced, and the state comes. They do a thorough inspection, and we already have to do fire and safety. Part of our PA key. So ladies, if you want to come up, and you only got two minutes.
Hi. My name is Barbara Green, and my address is 407 Tanger Street. And it's in Marietta, Pennsylvania. Is there something else I was supposed to provide? Is that it?
No, that's fine. Thank you.
So I work for Community Connections for Children. We are based in Lemoine and in York. And my job is to help childcare providers open their family childcare and group childcares. I currently work with seven different counties and 263 different municipalities. And Harrisburg is the only municipality that we work with that puts this burden on the family and group providers that are within the city. We have, with Department of Human Services and OCHD, providers must do a fire suppression system safety check every 30 days. They must be able to record that. They must be able to prove that to their inspectors. The inspectors do come out at least once a year. Like Dewana said, they also have the food program specialists coming out. They can connect with me. I've been working on a grant in Dauphin County for the past two years. We have opened about 20 different providers, and that means that, you know, within your, your city, we've probably opened at least 10. I don't know that number off the top of my head, but that puts more families working. That puts more children in quality childcare. We're trying to open as many as we can because so many are closing. They're closing because of the cost of living, and this is just one more burden for them. So again, I am totally backing Dewana that removing the ordinance would definitely lessen the burden on the family and group childcare providers that we have. That's it.
Good evening. My name is Anita Carroll Way. I'm from Philadelphia. I'm a childcare, I am from Childcare Providers United. Again, we were here last month. I shared with you the small amount of monies that the providers are making. It's not, I mean, it is an issue that they're paying something that they're not receiving, but even more importantly, everybody is not paying the same thing. So they're paying from $135, $250, $350. Somebody's not doing their job. So it's a, it's a real big issue. And I just have a letter, and I probably won't have enough time to read it, but I'm going to try, from one of the providers. But before I even say that, I've spoken to a few providers. Dewana has spoken to a few providers. And these providers are afraid to come out. And these providers are afraid to come out. I wonder why. So we are hoping that the provider does not have any repercussions behind us fighting for that ordinance to be dropped. It really isn't fair. But this is from one of the providers. To whom it may concern, I'm writing this letter in regard to the unfair treatment licensed childcare providers have received. Over 11 years, I have faithfully paid the requested and required fees to maintain the operation of my family childcare business. It wasn't until recently that myself and other licensed childcare providers discovered we are all paying a different fee, and none of our businesses have had yearly site visits from our local fire departments. Our question to our municipality is, when you pay for services, you don't expect to receive what you paid for. Well, we haven't received what we have been subjected to pay. We would also like to address the different fees for each of us when we are doing the same business. As you are aware, there is a daycare crisis, but we see this as an added crisis for the child, I mean, for the family childcare providers. Please take this and make it make sense because it really doesn't. So again, you know, I don't even know why I'm saying this to you because we're not going to get any changes through you guys. We need to actually speak to the people who write the codes. And it's called, you know, have a good evening.
Okay. Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment? Thank you. Anyone in the middle section?
I'm back. I just wanted to thank Councilwoman Rawls because she reached out to me, and it's my fault for not getting back to her. But I know I'm going to get back to her. I talked to my neighbor Vern McKissick, and I know more apartments are coming downtown. Many more apartments, but no parking spaces, no extra parking spaces. I don't know how you can create them, but you can't. And that's my problem because this has been going on, as you well know, for a long time. And the lady that started it has moved out of the area. So now, before more apartments get built in Harrisburg, which I think is great, but we really need something to do with the parking because all our neighbors are upset about it, and you all know. And I'll be in touch with Councilwoman Rawls. She really was a big help, and I thank her, and I thank the council for listening. We certainly hope we can get this done. Just for that Pine Street, that's all we want. Pine Street Open for Parking. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left?
Good evening, Council. Pam Parsons, Holly Street, near where the recent police incident was. The Parks and Rec report tonight gave me an opportunity to talk about something that has bothered me for a very long time. And that's a myth that we continue to promulgate every year at Capona. That Capona is somehow a Native American word that means sparkling water. And it is not. And it is time that we stop saying that. It is actually a made-up word. It was made up the first year of Capona in a contest. And there's actually a song that goes along with it. But it was made up by white people, and we have continued to tell that myth. And just to make sure that I wasn't crazy, I actually did some research. There's no such word in Sesquahannock. There's no such word in any Algonkin or Iroquois language. And it appears on our city website. And I think this should be the past, the final year for that myth to continue. In addition, I'd just like to mention briefly about the parking lot and in the Civil War Museum. It came to my attention that there was an engineer there on the 28th of September. And in talking with him, he told my colleague that he'd been called the day before. So that would have been September 28th. And to my knowledge, unless something has happened in the last week, Mr. Gilliam at the bridge has heard nothing from the city about this. So I just wanted to make sure that you on council understand what we in the community know. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comment. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
What do you call it, South 13th Street? Yeah, it seemed like you tried to offer some clarification with regards to the issue with the wall there by the bridge. And if we can get a bit more clarification, if it's a structural soundness issue, if it's a soil destabilization issue, like it would be really helpful for us to get some, a bit more technical clarity on that because it's one thing to tell folks that it looks worse than it actually is. I think a bit more contextual clarification of what exactly is the problem and what are some potential solutions? Especially if your area of analysis is simply being restricted to the air, the space that is your right-of-way, sorry, the city's right-of-way. I think it would be helpful for folks to understand what is your contextualization of your analysis in terms of the structural stability and soundness for a public safety issue on that? Thank you. Number two? I forgot. Almost forgot. For the Capona question. Oftentimes, I feel like when we have these cultural experiences, sadly, it comes up very performative, right? When was the last time we actually had a really engaging conversation with the indigenous folks who showed up at Capona? How often do we actually engage with the indigenous community of these settler colonized lands that we sit, stand, live, work, play? How often do we actually do that? So I think there's an opportunity to really be effective in terms of how we engage with those communities, not just bring them out when we need a performance. There's a great opportunity for real engagement, real effective community empowerment, and actually listen to what they may want of us, especially if we're talking about policies and practices that we are making about them. So thank you.
Thank you. There's no further public comment this evening? The time is 6:16 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.